It's a good movie. Pulls up pretty well. There's a little bit of stuff that dates it, but still pretty quality.
I know. I got so confused at the time. We normally have minutes before on Thursday mornings.
We miss it.
I thought I told them.
I would say we miss it.
Yeah, a hundred minutes before and then I'll go to the city commission meeting afterwards. And they're like, no, you won't. No, they're at the same time. And I'm like, oh, well, I guess I will do that then.
Right?
Guess we will not do that.
Yeah. What is that? You're missing it. Well, let's just watch the movie. Office Space?
We should have it at 9:00 AM all the time. There aren't a lot of people there.
Like the one where they're like from the 90s.
I don't know.
Where they're.
Remember the old days?
Mike Judge. Yeah, with the stapler. And he works for Initech. Initech? Something like that.
PDF.
Yeah, the cover letter.
I don't know. Smart enough to figure out how to make it go up now.
TPS. TPS report.
They go up anymore.
I don't know.
Well, yours might. You have to watch that.
I'm gonna have to. You're as short as I am and your legs are like bent and your knees are touching the floor. So it's called Office Space.
Office Space. It's very much.
It's because bigger, I'm not tall.
Yeah.
Well, I am at the end of Gen X.
You're being short so that's great, especially when you're leaning sometimes that much off the floor in a chair. You're just being nice and straight. I would almost rather that, rather than like my knees so far forward that I feel like I'm gonna start kneeling on the ground at any moment.
It's the non-sci-fi version of The Matrix.
Okay. It is 9 o'clock. It is time for, well, it is our regularly scheduled, new scheduled commission meeting today. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Commissioner Anru is not going to be here today, so I will go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of the great rain that you've brought to us. We're so grateful for the moisture and the effect that it's had on Garden City. Thank you to all the first responders who kept our community safe while we celebrated our independence. Please continue to watch over them and keep them safe. Lord, grant us wisdom so that we can make the best decisions for our community. It's in your name we pray. Amen. Amen. All right. Next up is approval of the minutes. Did anybody see anything that needed to be changed?
Nope.
Okay. They stand approved. Next up we have is a public comment. This is a time for anybody to come on up and talk about anything that is not on the agenda. You will have five minutes. And when you do come up, please state your name and we'll open it up for public. Hello.
Hello. My name is Lisa Smith. I'm from the community daycare and I'm a little teacher there, one of them. And I would like to invite you guys to our rebranding of the Little, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
The Little Leaders of Garden City Kansas. And we have an open house next Thursday from 6:30 to 8:30. And we have bouncing houses there. We have food. We have activities. And it's for everybody to come and check it out. We have an after, like our programs are gonna be like before and after school. There's gonna be a daytime program that will come in from a summer camp and documents.
When is that?
Um, next Thursday.
Okay.
Are there slots available right now in the daycare?
There are some.
For which ages?
Um, those are from like seven and to maybe six.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Hello.
Hello. I'm Sean there from the Berry Street Ice House. And we were just wanting to ask the commission to revisit. Sort of a weird situation. I think everyone in the liquor beer business thought that the provisions of the law change in 2019 from the state, and I believe that Fienen County adopted them. I think that everybody thought that those had been adopted. And so we've all been, in the industry, we've all been operating that way. And then we found out last week that, I guess Monday, that they were never formally adopted. And so we're hoping that the commission would address that. The spirit of the law change from the state was a trade-off to put the grocery stores and the liquor stores on more equal footing. And where, like the city of Holcomb has adopted those provisions, but Garden City hasn't. And so most people in the state have adopted some or all parts of that. And so the net effect of it is, is that it puts the liquor store down the side and the city of Garden City at a disadvantage. So we're just hoping that you all would take a look at that. And hopefully maybe pass that for later day.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name's Stephanie Koshak. I am also here representing community daycare as a parent. I wanted to just give an update of how things are going at the daycare. My son Silas is five months old and attends the daycare, now known as Little Leaders of GCK. And I just wanted to give you all an update from a parent's perspective of how things are going at the daycare. When the site director changed to Grace, I've seen huge improvements. She really has a great grasp on the waitlist and how to get family served quicker than what we previously saw. Because of Grace, I was able to really enjoy the last part of my pregnancy, knowing that I had a spot at the daycare in our community that's kind of desolate in that area. Silas has been attending the daycare since he was 10 weeks old. And I wanted to mention my career and my passion is centered around early child development. And so my expectations were very high. And I just wanted to let you all know that the Little Leaders of GCK has met and exceeded my expectations as a parent. They work on things such as telling time, early motor skills, such as rolling and setting up for infants, and having the children interact socially even at a young age. At five months old, they're playing together and interacting. Lisa is the head teacher in my son's room, and she communicates daily with my husband and I, including the staff. They check in on how Silas is doing at home, and we know he's thriving in this space. I truly have peace of mind while I'm at work and while Silas is being cared for at Little Leaders of GCK. They've made some safety updates, such as cameras in each room. So I know that even though I have my full faith in them, that Grace, the site director, and the board is able to check in and see how things are going. I care a lot about the development of my child, but overall Silas is very happy. He's happy to be dropped off and he's happy to be picked up each day. I have complete peace of mind, and I just wanted to give that update to you all. And I'm very happy to be a part of the Little Leaders of GCK family, and I'm excited to continue to watch them grow and thrive in our community.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Welcome.
My name is Jack. I'm the owner of Rye's Liquor. And I just kind of want to reiterate what Sean said there. I'm new to the business, so, but what from my understanding is July 4th is kind of a big day for the liquor business. So I know we're all kind of disappointed that we got the phone call late, July 3rd, saying we had to be closed. So most of our customers thought we were gonna be open, including myself. I'm still learning. You know, I was closed on the day I could have been open because I checked with the A B C. I called the state on July 4th and they told me I could be open. So I'm learning. I'm confused on when I can and can't. Like you said, I'd ask that you reconsider and adopt the state law. I just don't think it's fair that Walmart was able to sell some of these bigger corporations and you shut the little business down. I know that, but it hurt him on a lot of several local businesses. So I would ask that you make it fair and make it able for us to sell liquor on the same days Walmart. And I know they're a different license, but that's just being fair that they can sell, we can't. So I would ask that you consider that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for all who came up for the comment. Okay.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim July 7th, 2023 as Gregory Noel Day. And Mayor, Police Chief Courtney Pruitt has a proclamation to read if you desire him to do that prior to voting, or you can do that after you.
I'll make a motion that we approve. The proclamation is presented.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Chief Pruitt.
Proclamation. Whereas Gregory V. Noel was born 7 July 1922, one of 14 siblings, and was raised in Garden City, Kansas. And whereas in October 1943, Gregory, encompassing him, 3rd Battalion, 122nd Infantry Regiment, 28th Infantry Division, in which he served, was dispatched overseas to the European Theater for the Second World War. And whereas, having been originally stationed in England, Sergeant Noel, and the rest of the 28th Infantry Division, became part of the advancement from the beaches of Normandy, France, through Belgium, and Luxembourg, and into Germany. And whereas, on 7 November 1944, Sergeant Gregory Noel was reported killed in action in the fierce fighting near Commerchite, Germany, that would later be known as the Herken Forest Offensive, one of the longest battles the United States fought in the Second World War. And whereas, accounts of Sergeant Noel's service leading up to and during the Herken Forest Offensive memorialized his heroism and leadership. And whereas, after nearly 80 years, the efforts of the United States government's Department of Defense, prisoner of war, missing in action, Academy Agency positively identified the remains of Gregory V. Noel. And whereas Sergeant Gregory V. Noel was, I'm sorry, will posthumously receive the following awards and decorations from the United States Department of the Army. Bronze Star Medal with one bronze oak leaf cluster, Purple Heart, Army Good Conduct Medal, the European and African Middle Eastern Campaign Medal with three bronze service stars, World War II Victory Medal, the Combat Infantry Badge, and Honorable Service Lapel Button, World War II. And whereas, during a week where we celebrate as a country all the sacrifice that it took to achieve our freedom and preserve our freedom, we express our joy and thankfulness as a community that Gregory Noel has returned to the country for whom he laid his life down, to the family and community that will call him hero, and to his final and rightful rest, I'm sorry, place of rest and Mount of you cemetery near family having passed before and since. Now, therefore, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, does hereby proclaim July 7th, 2023 as Gregory Noel Day. In the City of Garden City, Kansas, and encourages all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his service to this community and ultimate sacrifice to his country. Signed and sealed this 6th day of July, 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we have members of the family.
There are some members of the family in the audience. If you'd like to come up, we can get a picture. Or if you'd like to say something before we do a picture, it's up to you. I don't want to put you on the spot, but we can definitely at least do a picture.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll invite you to do a picture, but I'm Paul Horn.
Yeah, hello.
I just want to say we really are appreciative of the job the city has done in honoring me. And we can't even handle the fact that you're just in the city itself. I can thank you for what you've done, so, or what you continue to do for us for the next day or two. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think this would be appropriate to have all of us. And Matt, you as well, please. You've done a lot to help coordinate all of this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim July 29th, 2023 as Stuart Boone Day.
I'll make the motion. We approve. The proclamation is presented.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. And do you want me to read the proclamation, or will it be?
Yes. We're not sure what the plans are with the family for July 29th, so this might be the best opportunity to do.
Okay. I'll go ahead and I'll read it then. Whereas Mr. Stuart Boone, a longtime resident of Garden City, Kansas, is being honored and remembered today for his commitment to family, church, community, and country. And whereas Mr. Boone served with the 99th Infantry Division, 924th Field Artillery Service Battery during the Battle of the Bulge, and was awarded the Bronze Star and three battle stars, and was active in the 99th Infantry Division annual reunions, and formed the Checkerboard Chorus in 1993. And whereas Mr. Boone entertained audiences of over 70,000 people, including playing the National Anthem at the St. Louis Cardinals and Colorado Rockies baseball stadiums, as well as being a featured trumpeter in the Boulder Boulder 10K Memorial Day Celebration since 1997. And whereas Mr. Boone demonstrated in countless ways his dedication to the welfare of others, and earned the respect and affection of people of all ages and from all walks of life. And whereas Mr. Boone devoted his time and commitment to being an active member and leader of many organizations throughout his years, and was inducted into the Garden City Community College Bronx Buster Hall of Fame in 1989. And whereas Mr. Boone passed away on May 10th, 2023, and is missed by his family, friends, and this community. Now, therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim July 29th, 2023 as Stuart Boone Day in the City of Garden City, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his service to this community. Signed and sealed this 6th day of July, 2023. Next up is approval of the minutes. Did anybody see anything that needed to be changed?
Nope.
Okay. They stand approved. Next up we have is a public comment. This is a time for anybody to come on up and talk about anything that is not on the agenda. You will have five minutes. And when you do come up, please state your name, and we'll open it up for public. Hello.
Hello. My name is Lisa Smith. I'm from the community daycare and I'm a little teacher there, one of them. And I would like to invite you guys to our rebranding of the Little, sorry, I'm a little nervous. The Little Leaders of Garden City Kansas. And we have an open house next Thursday from 6:30 to 8:30. And we have bouncing houses there. We have food. We have activities. And it's for everybody to come and check it out. We have an after, like our programs are gonna be like before and after school. There's gonna be a daytime program that will come in from a summer camp and a document. Yeah.
When is that?
Um, next Thursday.
Okay.
Next Thursday. And on the 2nd of January.
Okay. Are there slots available right now in the daycare?
There are.
Some.
For which ages?
Um, those are from like seven and to maybe six. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello. Anyone else?
Hello. My name's Stephanie Koshak. I am also here representing community daycare as a parent. I wanted to just give an update of how things are going at the daycare. My son Silas is five months old and attends the daycare, now known as Little Leaders of GCK. And I just wanted to give you all an update from a parent's perspective of how things are going at the daycare. When the site director changed to Grace, I've seen huge improvements. She really has a great grasp on the waitlist and how to get family served quicker than what we previously saw. Because of Grace, I was able to really enjoy the last part of my pregnancy, knowing that I had a spot at the daycare in our community that's kind of desolate in that area. Silas has been attending the daycare since he was 10 weeks old. And I wanted to mention my career and my passion is centered around early child development. And so my expectations were very high. And I just wanted to let you all know that the Little Leaders of GCK has met and exceeded my expectations as a parent. They work on things such as telling time, early motor skills, such as rolling and setting up for infants, and having the children interact socially even at a young age. At five months old, they're playing together and interacting. Lisa is the head teacher in my son's room, and she communicates daily with my husband and I, including the staff. They check in on how Silas is doing at home, and we know he's thriving in this space. I truly have peace of mind while I'm at work and while Silas is being cared for at Little Leaders of GCK. They've made some safety updates, such as cameras in each room. So I know that even though I have my full faith in them, that Grace, the site director, and the board is able to check in and see how things are going. I care a lot about the development of my child, but overall Silas is very happy. He's happy to be dropped off and he's happy to be picked up each day. I have complete peace of mind, and I just wanted to give that update to you all. And I'm very happy to be a part of the Little Leaders of GCK family, and I'm excited to continue to watch them grow and thrive in our community.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Welcome.
My name is Jack. I'm the owner of Rye's Liquor. And I just kind of want to reiterate what Sean said there. I'm new to the business, so, but what from my understanding is July 4th is kind of a big day for the liquor business. So I know we're all kind of disappointed that we got the phone call late, July 3rd, saying we had to be closed. So most of our customers thought we were gonna be open, including myself. I'm still learning. You know, I was closed on the day I could have been open because I checked with the A B C. I called the state on July 4th and they told me I could be open. So I'm learning. I'm confused on when I can and can't. Like you said, I'd ask that you reconsider and adopt the state law. I just don't think it's fair that Walmart was able to sell some of these bigger corporations and you shut the little business down. I know that, but it hurt him on a lot of several local businesses. So I would ask that you make it fair and make it able for us to sell liquor on the same days Walmart. And I know they're a different license, but that's just being fair that they can sell, we can't. So I would ask that you consider that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for all who came up for the comment. Okay.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim July 7th, 2023 as Gregory Noel Day. And Mayor, Police Chief Courtney Pruitt has a proclamation to read if you desire him to do that prior to voting, or you can do that after you.
I'll make a motion that we approve. The proclamation is presented.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll take it. I'll second it.
He's got it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And do you want me to read it? Okay. All right. Whereas National Zookeeper Week was created to focus on the need to protect and preserve wildlife and vanishing habitats, and recognize the role animal keepers play in those efforts. And whereas many of the world's animal populations continue to decline, and Lee Richardson Zoo has been sharing the message of conservation and working for the conservation of species for over 96 years through the combined efforts of the members of the Animal Care Team, the Animal Health and Nutritious Team, Nutrition Team, the Maintenance Team, the Conservation Awareness Team, and the Administration Team of Lee Richardson Zoo, all working to inspire action to change the trend. And whereas, a zookeeper's work is never done. It happens every day, at all hours of the day, and in all sorts of weather. And whereas, zookeepers have a physically demanding job that they carry out with determination and passion. And whereas zookeepers work to save species by caring for individuals, and the quality of their work directly impacts the quality of the animals' lives, as well as the experiences of the guests. And whereas zookeepers have the honor of working closely with many rare and wonderful animals, but also bear the emotional burden when those animals pass on. And whereas zookeepers use observational skills, communication skills, attention to detail, deductive reasoning, and animal sense to provide top-quality animal welfare for the zoo residents, and contribute to safe and engaging experiences for zoo guests, helping guests connect to wildlife and wild places. And whereas zookeepers are continually striving to improve their skills and knowledge in order to provide better care for the animals and to convey each species' unique story. And whereas, through their combined efforts of the staff of Lee Richardson Zoo, with the support of the City of Garden City and the community, have created an inclusive environment where all are welcome to view and learn about a wide range of species, and how we can each do our part to contribute to their conservation. Now, therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim July 16th through 22nd, 2023 as National Zookeeper Week in the City of Garden City, and encourage all residents to express their appreciation to the animal care professionals and their colleagues for their efforts, and to visit the zoo, and engage in the programs and activities at the zoo throughout the year. Signed and sealed this 6th day of July, 2023. Do you want me to? Are we gonna have an event, or?
We're gonna, communications will come out with a picture of the staff.
Okay.
With the staff.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Welcome.
My name is Jack. I'm the owner of Rye's Liquor. And I just kind of want to reiterate what Sean said there. I'm new to the business, so, but what from my understanding is July 4th is kind of a big day for the liquor business. So I know we're all kind of disappointed that we got the phone call late, July 3rd, saying we had to be closed. So most of our customers thought we were gonna be open, including myself. I'm still learning. You know, I was closed on the day I could have been open because I checked with the A B C. I called the state on July 4th and they told me I could be open. So I'm learning. I'm confused on when I can and can't. Like you said, I'd ask that you reconsider and adopt the state law. I just don't think it's fair that Walmart was able to sell some of these bigger corporations and you shut the little business down. I know that, but it hurt him on a lot of several local businesses. So I would ask that you make it fair and make it able for us to sell liquor on the same days Walmart. And I know they're a different license, but that's just being fair that they can sell, we can't. So I would ask that you consider that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for all who came up for the comment. Okay. Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim July 7th, 2023 as Stuart Boone Day in the City of Garden City, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his service to this community. Signed and sealed this 6th day of July, 2023. Do you want me to read it? Okay. All right. Whereas National Zookeeper Week was created to focus on the need to protect and preserve wildlife and vanishing habitats, and recognize the role animal keepers play in those efforts. And whereas many of the world's animal populations continue to decline, and Lee Richardson Zoo has been sharing the message of conservation and working for the conservation of species for over 96 years through the combined efforts of the members of the Animal Care Team, the Animal Health and Nutritious Team, Nutrition Team, the Maintenance Team, the Conservation Awareness Team, and the Administration Team of Lee Richardson Zoo, all working to inspire action to change the trend. And whereas, a zookeeper's work is never done. It happens every day, at all hours of the day, and in all sorts of weather. And whereas, zookeepers have a physically demanding job that they carry out with determination and passion. And whereas zookeepers work to save species by caring for individuals, and the quality of their work directly impacts the quality of the animals' lives, as well as the experiences of the guests. And whereas zookeepers have the honor of working closely with many rare and wonderful animals, but also bear the emotional burden when those animals pass on. And whereas zookeepers use observational skills, communication skills, attention to detail, deductive reasoning, and animal sense to provide top-quality animal welfare for the zoo residents, and contribute to safe and engaging experiences for zoo guests, helping guests connect to wildlife and wild places. And whereas zookeepers are continually striving to improve their skills and knowledge in order to provide better care for the animals and to convey each species' unique story. And whereas, through their combined efforts of the staff of Lee Richardson Zoo, with the support of the City of Garden City and the community, have created an inclusive environment where all are welcome to view and learn about a wide range of species, and how we can each do our part to contribute to their conservation. Now, therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim July 16th through 22nd, 2023 as National Zookeeper Week in the City of Garden City, and encourage all residents to express their appreciation to the animal care professionals and their colleagues for their efforts, and to visit the zoo, and engage in the programs and activities at the zoo throughout the year. Signed and sealed this 6th day of July, 2023. Do you want me to? Are we gonna have an event, or?
We're gonna, communications will come out with a picture of the staff.
Okay.
With the staff.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
After all those cans, pretty weird.
I know. Right?
Mayor Commissioners, item 7A, Public Works and Utilities Director Mike Muirhead will advise the governing body of a recent receipt of a little over $3 million from the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency. Mike?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. On June 12th, 2023, the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, KMEA, refunded the city credit for its four remaining member of the Energy Management Program Number Two. There's actually three EMPs in KMEA. EMP One, EMP Two, and EMP Three, where the EMP Two relaxed, who's the largest member of KMEA. Anyway, they refunded these funds that they received from the auction revenue rights, AARs, and transmission congestion rights, which are referred to as TCRs. These funds were generated over the past several years, and more significantly, the past 18 months. The high cost of energy over the past 12 to 18 months, what has driven, which is normally a much less amount, up to this $3 million, you know, high watermark, I guess. This was refunded back to the city. And I just wanted to make sure that you know that this is not to be considered a sustainable funding source. It's more of a on-time thing. And there's any future ones that expect it to be a much smaller amount. There is still a small amount being kept over at KMEA that cover any issues we have with the Jameson Energy Center, with the insurance, or anything like that. So just wanted to bring you aware of that. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Nice credits.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Mayor Commissioners, if we could jump back to Section 4, we'd like to add an item D. It's on your bench. I don't have it in front of me. But we ask that you proclaim July, what's the date?
6th. Oh, no. July 12th.
July 12th as Jamie Stewart Day.
All right. Someone like to make.
I'll make a motion that we approve. The proclamation is presented to us on the bench.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. So I'll go ahead and I'll read this proclamation. And Jamie, you're welcome to come on down, and we'll do a picture with all of us again. Whereas Jamie Stewart began working for the City of Garden City in the Communications Department on April 1st, 2019, as a Communications Project Manager. And whereas Jamie increased citizen awareness of city projects, programs, and policy issues. And whereas Jamie used print, video, social media, and her keen sense of storytelling to connect the public and their public officials. And whereas Jamie helped draft and edit correspondence, social media posts, speeches, and testimony, serving as the city government's voice through her tenure. And whereas Jamie's analysis of internal and external communication practices provided all city departments a model for how to use performance measurement to improve operations. And whereas Jamie was a positive and active member of the city's management team. And whereas Jamie will leave employment with the City of Garden City on August 11th, 2023, after four years of service. And whereas Jamie will long be regarded as one of the hardest-working and most dedicated and most recognizable public servants in Garden City's history. Now, therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim July 12th, 2023 as Jamie Stewart Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for her service to our community, and highly commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her responsibilities and duties as Communications Project Manager at the City of Garden City. Signed and sealed this 6th day of July, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7B through D are staff reports. Do you have any questions over those? If not, item E is required update from Cox Communications. I think that takes us to the meetings of note. Only a couple of those require RSVPs. So take care of those through Seelin or Corey, if you would. Item 9A is the appropriation ordinance. And if approved, it would be appropriation, or it would be the ordinance number 2582-2023A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2582-2023A.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve vendor contracts submitted by Tyler Technology, Inc. for public safety software to include computer-aided dispatch, records management system, municipal court program for the Garden City Police, and a municipal court program for the Garden City Police Department, Garden City Municipal Court, and Garden City Fire Department. Chief.
He's coming.
Sorry. Captain.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. As I said, we're here to.
Can you do that or can we deny the request? We would like you to do that.
I'll make the motion. We approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
I'll take it. I'll second it.
He's got it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And you want me to read it? Okay, all right. Whereas National Zookeeper Week was created to focus on the need to protect and preserve wildlife and vanishing habitats and recognize the role animal keepers play in those efforts. And whereas many of the world's animal populations continue to decline, and Lee Richardson Zoo has been sharing the message of conservation and working for the conservation of species for over 96 years through the combined efforts of the members of the Animal Care Team, the Animal Health and Nutritious Team, Nutrition Team, the Maintenance Team, the Conservation Awareness Team, and the Administration Team of Lee Richardson Zoo, all working to inspire action to change the trend. And whereas, a zookeeper's work is never done. It happens every day at all hours of the day and in all sorts of weather. And whereas, zookeepers have a physically demanding job that they carry out with determination and passion. And whereas, zookeepers work to save species by caring for individuals, and the quality of their work directly impacts the quality of the animals' lives as well as the experiences of the guests. And whereas, zookeepers have the honor of working closely with many rare and wonderful animals, but also bear the emotional burden when those animals pass on. And whereas, zookeepers use observational skills, communication skills, attention to detail, deductive reasoning, and animal sense to provide top-quality animal welfare for the zoo residents and contribute to safe and engaging experiences for zoo guests, helping guests connect to wildlife and wild places. And whereas, zookeepers are continually striving to improve their skills and knowledge in order to provide better care for the animals and to convey each species' unique story. And whereas, through their combined efforts of the staff of Lee Richardson Zoo, with the support of the City of Garden City and the community, have created an inclusive environment where all are welcome to view and learn about a wide range of species and how we can each do our part to contribute to their conservation. Now therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim July 16th through 22nd, 2023, as National Zookeeper Week in the City of Garden City, and encourage all residents to express their appreciation to the animal care professionals and their colleagues for their efforts, and to visit the zoo and engage in the programs and activities at the zoo throughout the year. Signed and sealed this 6th day of July, 2023.
Thank you.
Do you want me to, are we going to have an event or?
We're going to, communications will come out with a picture of the staff.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to throw all those cans pretty good.
I know, right?
Mayor Commissioners, Item 7A, Public Works and Utilities Director Mike Muirhead will advise the governing body of a recent receipt of a little over $3 million from the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency. Mike?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. On June 12th, 2023, the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, KMEA, refunded the city credit for its portion of any member of the Energy Management Program Number Two. There's actually three EMPs in KMEA, EMP One, EMP Two, and EMP Three, where the EMP Two were lax with the largest member of KMEA. Anyway, the refund of these funds that they received from the auction revenue rights, AARs, and transmission congestion rights, which are referred to as TCRs, these funds were generated over the past several years and more significantly, the past 18 months. The high cost of energy over the past 12 to 18 months, what has driven, which is normally a much less amount, up to this $3 million, you know, high watermark, I guess. This was refunded back to the city as a, and I wanted to make sure that you know that this is not to be considered a sustainable funding source. It's more of a one-time thing. And there's any future ones that expect it to be a much smaller amount. There is still a small amount being kept over at KMEA that cover any issues we had with the Jameson Energy Center, with insurance or anything like that. So just wanted to bring you aware of that. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Nice, nice credits.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Mayor Commissioners, if we could jump back to Section 4, we'd like to add an Item D. It's on your bench. I don't have it in front of me. But we ask that you proclaim July, what's the date?
Six, no, July 12th.
July 12th as Jamie Stewart Day.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented to us on the bench.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So I'll go ahead and I'll read this proclamation. And Jamie, you're welcome to come on down and we'll do a picture with all of us again. Whereas, Jamie Stewart began working for the City of Garden City in the Communications Department on April 1st, 2019, as a Communications Project Manager. And whereas, Jamie increased citizen awareness of city projects, programs, and policy issues. And whereas, Jamie used print, video, social media, and her keen sense of storytelling to connect the public and their public officials. And whereas, Jamie helped draft and edit correspondence, social media posts, speeches, and testimony, serving as the city government's voice through her tenure. And whereas, Jamie's analysis of internal and external communication practices provided all city departments a model for how to use performance measurement to improve operations. And whereas, Jamie was a positive and active member of the city's management team. And whereas, Jamie will leave employment with the City of Garden City on August 11th, 2020, yeah, August 11th, 2023, after four years of service. And whereas, Jamie will long be regarded as one of the hardest-working and most dedicated and most recognizable public servants in Garden City's history. Now therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim July 12th, 2023, as Jamie Stewart Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for her service to her community, and highly commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her responsibilities and duties as Communications Project Manager at the City of Garden City. Signed and sealed this 6th day of July, 2023.
So now it's gonna be Jamie Day.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Items 7B through D are staff reports. Do you have any questions over those? If not, Item E is required update from Cox Communications. I think that takes us to the meetings of note. Only a couple of those require RSVPs. So take care of those through Seelin or Corey if you would. Item 9A is the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, it would be appropriation, or it would be the ordinance Number 2582-2023A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance Number 2582-2023A.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve vendor contracts submitted by Tyler Technology, Inc. for public safety software to include computer-aided dispatch, records management system, municipal court program for the Garden City Police, and a municipal court program for the Garden City Police Department, Garden City Municipal Court, and Garden City Fire Department. Chief?
He's coming.
Sorry, Captain.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. As I said, we're here to consider approval of crab vendor contracts submitted by Tyler Technology for the computer-aided dispatch records management system and municipal court program for the Garden City Police Department, Garden City Municipal Court, and Garden City Fire Department. In October 2020, the Garden City Police Department identified the need to replace its outdated end-of-life computer-aided dispatch and records management system with a more robust solution. The Garden City Police Department identified that the system and the Garden City Municipal Court system both needed upgraded and are firmly end-of-life. In July 2021, the governing body approved a proposal to engage Delta Works, a technology consulting company, to conduct a research and assistance selection process. The selection committee compromised the representatives from the city administration, City of Garden City IT, Garden City Municipal Court, the Garden City Fire Department. The authority of Delta Works generated a request for a proposal that was distributed to potential vendors. Forecom be submitted responses to the RFP, GeoConex, and Central Square Tyler Technology and ProPhoenix. Each proposal underwent a meticulous review, leading the committee to the next phase of evaluation, which involved demonstrations and reference checks with ProPhoenix, Central Square, and Tyler Technology. The selection committee recommends Tyler to provide the public safety software. Tyler Technology offered a well-established CAD-RMS solution that most closely aligns with the seizure requirements and demonstrates integration capabilities and functionalities that is lacking with the current system. It will also help the city of works to reduce the number of independent software systems within the organization. The contract presented today includes the initial implementation cost of the software as well as five years' reoccurring cost. The total price of the contract presented is $1.6 million, 78,833. This includes the one-time cost for the police department portion of the software of $894,000, as well as recurring annual fee of $140,390. The first year of the reoccurring fees for the police department includes discounts of $103,901. It also includes one-time cost for municipal court portion of the software of $82,363, and as well as annual fees of $46,819. In conjunction with the project, the city will also need to purchase various hardware and equipment to support the new software with a cost of approximately $480,000. The city is choosing to acquire the hardware itself as it is more cost-effective than including it in the proposal for the software provided. With the cost of the equipment included, the total anticipated cost of the project for a five-year term is approximately $2.1 million, $158,833. The city intends to seek a financial solution for the one-time costs approved as well as the first two years of reoccurring fees. The city is obligated to maintain the current software while that conversion occurs and has budgeted for the reoccurring fees of Central Square, which is the current software for the municipal court. Once the new software is alive and those contracts are terminated, the reoccurring fees, the new software will be paid from the police and municipal court maintenance contract budget. The portion of the one-time cost will be satisfied by using approved funds from the city's 911 funds. E911 has been approved to pay approximately $170,000 of the one-time costs. If the commission approves the contract as presented, staff will prepare RFP, see the financial solution for the total amount of $1.5 million and $60,000. The RFP will request proposals financed the full amount, seven-year term. The total cost of a five-year, five-year agreement with Tyler Technology is $1.778,833. The additional hardware costs of $480,000 brings the total of $2.158,833. The police department budget includes $300,000 in 2023 and 2024 recovered and restricted financial payments. These payments will be made from one of the line items. And, if you have any questions, and Jared Coleman's here to answer the number of questions.
So with this new software, it'll tie everything, it'll tie all the department, those departments together then?
Yes.
And make it more efficient for everybody to communicate?
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, we have our CAD-RMS as, we have a software for evidence, there's a separate from our CAD-RMS. Municipal Court has a separate software, so it'll tie everything together. One thing that we don't have now is for fire, so this will tie fire and dispatch, so they can get some information that they need when they're responding to calls as well.
And will we need to upgrade, have we, we're upgrading the dispatch software right now, or are we going to need to do that later on?
This is part of this.
That's part of it?
Yes, part of it, yes.
All right.
The only question I had was kind of with the support tech. I've read it through it, and it said it offered 24/7 support service, but I know sometimes there's a number, which I didn't see, which I didn't think that there was a limit on calls if you needed tech support. Just, did you, in interviews or anything, did they ask that question on numbers of calls coming in for support? Was it a limited number, or is it just unlimited?
It's unlimited to an extent, so if it's a major catastrophic issue where they get, and the system goes down, then those are 24/7, seven days a week. They'll get on those issues right away, and they'll get it fixed as soon as they can. Anything else that is minor issues that can be handled, business hours, eight to five minutes through Friday, they'll handle those. They'll submit a ticket, and they will, they will go through, and they'll get those fixes as timely as possible.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Tyler Technologies as presented, and approve staff to prepare an RFP for financing, a total amount of $1,560,000 for a seven-year term.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a project master service agreement and task order number one with Burns &amp; McDonald to provide engineering and ancillary services for the Garden City water reclamation and reuse project. Fred?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I do have with me this morning Jake White, who is the project manager for this task from Burns &amp; McDonald. I'm only inviting up if you have any questions for him. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a project master service agreement, task order number one, with Burns &amp; McDonald to provide an engineering and ancillary services for the Garden City water reclamation and reuse project. Congress approved a funding bill in December 2022 that included a congressionally-directed appropriation of the City of Garden City to implement a project that reclaimed treated wastewater to benefit, to benefit the portion of the Okla aquifer that serves the City of Garden City. The legislation provides $19.1 million of available funding to pursue a reuse project. In April 2023, staff solicited a request for qualifications from qualified firms to assist with the project tasks. As a result of the RFP process, the governing body selected Burns &amp; McDonald on May 16th, 2023, to assist the city with engineering, planning, and administration functions resulting from using the grant funds. Governing body is asked to consider the following documents. Item one, professional services agreement. This document will serve as the master agreement between the City of Garden City and Burns &amp; McDonald for the duration of the Garden City water reclamation and reuse project. The document outlines the relationship between the city and Burns &amp; McDonald. Specific task orders for work completed by Burns &amp; McDonald will reference this master document. Item number two is the task order. This document outlines the scope of services provided in this particular task order, services provided per engineers' rate sheet not to exceed $255,000. An overview of the tasks included in this agreement is a National Environmental Policy Act review, stakeholder engagement, including data gathering to determine stakeholder water delivery needs, and coordination for the construction of infrastructure by the city to deliver the reclaimed water resources, force main alignments, effluent storage, pump station location, and infiltration basin location. A project delivery evaluation, and to explain that, that's basically going to be a discussion that will occur in the future with the governing body regarding the method for which this project will be delivered, whether that be a designed-to-build or design-to-build project. And then, of course, project meetings and administration, which will include assistance in preparing progress reports for EPA. The city legal council has reviewed the agreements, and additionally, staff at EPA Region Seven are reviewing the documents to ensure that the agreement structure meets EPA requirements for eligible reimbursement. At this stage, I'd like to pause and bring to your attention a memoranda that's on the dial this afternoon for this morning regarding the comment that we did receive from EPA late yesterday. They have requested that we add some language to that document, which is outlined in that memo. Staff will modify the agreement with the following language to be added to the agreement for the requirements of the grant agreement with EPA, and the language is as follows. Access to pertinent contract records is provided to the grantee, EPA, U.S. Comptroller General, or any duly authorized representatives for the purpose of making audit, examination, excerpts, and transcriptions for the requirements of Code of Federal Regulations Title II, Section 200.337A. And that is the description of that, is access to records. So in terms of changing the relationship between the city and Burns &amp; McDonald, we feel that's immaterial. It's just to provide insurance to EPA, they'll have access to all of our project files. The overall delivery plan, a graphic attached to this note, is provided as a reference to the governing body. The pre-award items addressed in this task order outline future tasks required to complete this project. Alternatives, the governing body may approve the professional services agreement and task order, which is Exhibit A from Burns &amp; McDonald. The governing body may deny approval of the professional services agreement and task order from Burns &amp; McDonald, and direct staff to work with the firm to modify the agreements and tasks. And as a note, we would, we would modify the agreement that you have in your packet to include these two sentences for EPA's recommendation, and we'll provide that for signature when those are available. Staff recommends the governing body approve the professional services agreement and task order, Exhibit A. Fiscal note, tasks identified in the task order include grant application activities. Based on our conversations with EPA Region Seven, staff believes that the activities outlined in this task order will be eligible for reimbursement from EPA as part of funding received via congressionally-directed appropriation for this project. The grant amount is $19.1 million. The grant will reimburse 80% of the project cost. The city will be responsible for the 20% balance. For this task order, the city will be responsible for up to $51,000 of the project expense. Funding for the project will come from the Water Reuse Utility Fund, capital outlay, GL code as referenced for your information. The current budget authority is $200,000, and the budget for this fund will be amended for 2023 if needed. To provide funding to meet the budget, the budget authority budgeted for the Water Reuse Utility Fund, the Water and Sewage Fund will transfer $200,000 from its cash balance. Commissioner, any questions? Get my, my tongue back in my mouth. I do want to have Jake White come up and introduce himself, if you have any questions for him, he's available.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the commission, it's great to see you all again. I can't really add much to what Fred just said. Through our scope here, so obviously, if you have any, answer any questions you have.
I just want to know how the magic trick works, because usually when you run water, it goes down, right? But you guys are trying to bring it up.
Bring it up, bring it out, use it.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the professional service agreement and task order number one with the modification for the verbiage for the EPA in the agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider an emergency purchase for the material and roof repair proposal for the recreation building roof. The recreation building needs roof repair. The current roof leaks and continues to see structural deterioration. Immediate action is necessary to avoid greater expenses and potentially safety hazards associated with the compromised roof. To ensure long-term stability, integrity, and functionality of the recreation building, it is encouraged that the emergency funding be allocated for the replacement of the damaged roof. Four area roofing businesses were contacted for proposals. Three businesses reviewed the roof, and, and two businesses, Weathercraft and Overhead Door, or Weathercraft, Overhead Door, and BB Douglas submitted proposals. The roof repair will benefit the recreation building with safety, preservation of documents and equipment, and will limit long-term expenses. We ask that the governing body accept the proposal from Weathercraft Division of Overhead Door Company in the amount of $205,459. $200,000 of the cost will come from funding received from the KMEA EMP Two credits mentioned earlier by Mike in the report of the city manager, and the balance of those costs would come from the Parks Department Repair Building Fund.
I believe that we accept the proposal from Weathercraft Division of Overhead Door Company of Garden City for $205,495, or $459.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Kansas Department of Transportation Project Authorization Agreement, Bridge Replacement on Highway 83.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. KDOT plans to replace the bridge that crosses the Arkansas River on US 82 through Main Street. The bid date is scheduled in the fall of 2023, and correction is expected to start in early spring of 24, 2024, and last across like 12 to 14 months. The project in front of you today is considered part of the city's connecting link, which is a route that connects the state highway to a highway through a community. So like this Main Street is in Garden City, obviously. This agreement is approved today, spells out the city's responsibilities for the project. The only items that the city is responsible for, for funding are the removal and replacement of some additional street lighting, or remove some additional sunlight that's on either side of the bridge, on the north side of the bridge. It'll be removed, and then the bridge is completed, it will be replaced, and we'll put the lighting on the bridge, so the bridge will actually be lit up. So the alternatives would be that the governing body may approve this KDOT Authorization Agreement, Bridge Replacement Project, or the governing body may not approve. But staff recommends that the governing body approve the project as listed, and in fiscal note, the cost of this is $750 for the street lighting that will be required, and that will come from the electric departments, GL code, as listed. Now, those lights are already been ordered, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll make the motion we approve the KDOT Project Authorization Agreement for the bridge replacement, and have the mayor sign that agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve grant funding agreement of $340,000 between the Secretary of Transportation from the Kansas Department of Transportation and the City of Garden City regarding Safe Streets for All program.
Yep, I'm still here. In September of 2022, the city applied to the U.S. Department of Transportation and was awarded grant funding of $1.3 million for the multi-jurisdictional Safe Streets for All project referred to as the SS40, the Highway 83 Action Plan. The U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All discretionary grant program provides support for planning, infrastructure, behavioral, and operational incentives that prevent death and serious injury on roads and streets involving all roadways users, including pedestrians, by example, public transportation, personal conveyance, and micro-mobility users, motorists and commercial vehicle operators. So a lot, covers a lot of stuff. If approved today by the governing body, KDOT agrees to reimburse the City of Garden City as the local public authority for eligible activities in an amount not to exceed $340,000 in accordance with the agreement after receipt of proper billing from us, they'll reimburse us for that. The $340,000 is provided by KDOT to cover engineering expenses associated with this Safe Streets for All project. The engineering firm has not yet been selected and is currently under review. The approval of the engineering firm will be brought to the governing body for consideration at its July 18 meeting. So the alternative would be that the governing body may approve the grant agreement and authorize the mayor to sign it, or the governing body may choose not to approve the grant. Staff recommends that the governing body approve the grant agreement and authorize the mayor to sign that. There is no financial impact on the city by the mayor designing the year. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll hand them on that.
I move to approve that grant agreement and authorize the mayor to sign it.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a draft of the 2024 city budget so that the indication of revenue neutral rate intent can be authorized to be signed by the mayor. Jared.
No deep sighs while I walk up here. Good, or good morning, I guess. The City Commission has concluded its review of the 2024 city manager's proposed budget. The city received the estimated valuation from the county clerk, and the assessed valuation used for the budget preparation for the city is $279,804,976. This is an increase of approximately 11% over 2022. The revenue neutral rate identified by the county is 34.279 mils. The following changes made since the last discussion on June 20, 2023 are currently incorporated in the 2023 mil levy calculation for the 2024 budget. 2023 revised salary expense totals were reduced by $240,000 across various departments to account for savings due to department vacancies. Departments adjusted include IT at $24,000, Communications at $4,000, Police Support Services $45,000, Fire Operations $20,000, Parks $15,000, Zoo Maintenance $14,000, Zoo Animal Care $8,000, Recreation Operations $15,000, Recreation Aquatics $75,000, and Street $20,000. Reduced municipal court maintenance contracts by $130,000 in 2024 to account for first-year costs of their software upgrade being included in a financing mechanism with the PD software upgrade. Accounting for the valuation from the county and the two changes indicated above, the budget as it has been presented to the commission would require a mil levy of 41.176 or an increase of 2.78 mils. To achieve a flat mil levy rate of 38.378, the budget would need to be adjusted by an additional $782,832. A one-mil reduction would require an adjustment of $1,623,637. While this item aims to indicate the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, it is helpful for staff to receive direction from the commission related to specific budget items and/or a targeted mil levy rate. In that regard, here are the major discussion points on expenses, revenues, and unbudgeted considerations, and I'm going to pass it off to Matt to talk through the expenses listed and kind of our logic on why they're indicated with the green, yellow, or red.
Yeah, so in all funds, first of all, drop down to number one, the salary line item reflects a 3% salary pool. 2% of the increase is related to pay plan adjustments on January 1st to adjust for increases in cost of living and to maintain competitiveness in our pay plan. The other 1% of the increase is related to the annual step increase that coincides with each employee's annual performance evaluation occurring on the employee's anniversary date. This step increase represents approximately 2% increase at the time of occurrence. So we've kind of color-coded these red, yellow, and green to represent the, the level of kind of staff endorsement. We recognize that these are policy decisions, so this is beyond the time where we pass off the budget for your consideration, but kind of anticipating if, you know, sort of we were in your shoes and looking at the impact, not just of this budget, but then how that sets you up for the consideration and adoption of the 2025 budget. We would recommend this being a lever you pulled, just because we do feel that the likelihood of a recommended further pay plan adjustment may be, may be coming. We have a third-party review of that by McGrath Consulting going on right now. We implemented our pay plan January 1st, 2021, immediately prior to the Midwest CPI going on a trend of inflation, and so thankfully, the commission changed from kind of a 1% salary pool to an annual adjustment trend over previous years to 2%, 2%. That's minimized the degree to which we're behind, but we anticipate that that study's going to show that we're behind. So reducing the salary pool as proposed in the budget would move us further in the wrong direction. Number two, the employee's contribution to health insurance per authorized physician is $10,200 per year. We recommend that this not be adjusted as well, keeping in proportion. The employer's share is something that we're, we're pleased to do in this budget. It's been some time since we have adjusted the employer's share to employee health insurance. The employer's budgeted contribution to workers' compensation for authorized position is $1,180. We believe this reflects the necessary contribution to the fund based on projected 2024 premiums. Downtown Vision number four in Finney County Economic Development Direct, Finney County Economic Development number five, those are requested budget amounts. These are yellow. These are partner agencies particularly related to the growth and development of the community and the increased evaluation through, you know, bringing in, bringing in employers, both industrial and commercial, but also assisting with, with housing and other issues. So there is an increase requested in Downtown Vision's budget. Economic Development's is consistent with last year's level. New positions, there are three firefighting positions. Those are being paid for with the .30 sales tax approved in 2017 that gets ready to staff up the third fire station. We would recommend against eliminating those positions because it wouldn't generate any savings from the balancing numbers, the revenues coming out. A dedicated sales tax. The following positions, oh, that was in the 2023 budget. In the 2024 budget, that's the, that's the case as well with the firefighters. Now, there's one generalist position indicated in the 2024 budget, and while a position in whole or in part in that regard is likely to be proposed at some point in time, I think staff's comfortable that in order to get the 2024 budget to a target that's different than what it is now, we could, we could support that, that change. Cash carryover, it's part of your financial management policy to continue to increase that over time. What's in the proposed budget now is a $100,000 increase in the cash carryover in the general fund. That could be adjusted, and you'd still be consistent with your policy if you did a $25,000 or $50,000 increase. But, you know, again, the caution there is more a reflection of the decisions you make now to finalize your 2024 budget are actually the first decisions you make that impact your 2025 budget. There is number eight, and there is $550,000 budgeted between the police department budget and the fire department budget and the general fund for the cost of a mobile command unit. The city received a commitment of $500,000 from congressionally-directed spending through the COPS grant towards the purchase of this equipment, and we can also use approximately $250,000 from the E911 fund. The total estimated price of the mobile command unit is around $1.3 million. The estimated lead time on the unit is approximately 26 months. The city could elect to make a down payment of the $750,000 from the grant and E911 funds to receive a discount and pay the remaining balance upon delivery. This would allow the city's portion of the cost to be spread across 2023, 2024, and 2025 budgets. While we believe this is still a desired project, we also believe that we could pull the general fund amount and seek other revenue sources for the $550,000 that remain. We do have to go about the acquisition of a mobile command unit through, through federal purchasing guidelines, so it's a little presumptive to say that there's a discount, but usually in, when you out and bid those things, there's some form of encouragement to act sooner than later by the vendors. So I think this is a possible quote-unquote cut without sacrificing necessarily the intent of the money, which is to get a mobile command unit and make good on the, make good on the grant received from the federal government. $50,000 is budgeted for facilities maintenance in 2023 and 2024. There are a volume of current needs and I think a strategy pending for how we might go about those that would require the $50,000 in both budget years and potentially a little more. So we caution pretty strongly against that cut. There is a $425,000 transfer from the general fund to the golf course, consistent with prior years. The golf court, the operation of the golf course fund is pretty, is dependent on that, that transfer, and that is a fund where the expense projections are very lean and we're probably more aggressive in this budget than we are, in this fund than we are in other areas on the revenue projections, so that would, a reduction in that, in that transfer would create a hardship in, in that fund. We do anticipate bond issuance of approximately $5 million, a little over $5 million to cover the cost of three projects. The cemetery expansion project entirely local funding. East Side Pedestrian Pathway project, which is a blend of city funding and state funding. And the Kansas Avenue widening project, which is also a blend of city funding and state funding. The budget impact in 2024 would be approximately $122,000 for every $1 million of project cost cut from the above list. Would recommend against cutting either of the two state cost share projects, and the third project cemetery, it's also already been delayed a couple of years, and we're seeing at current rates, the burials and plot reservations indicate that it's no longer feasible to wait to develop the next section. So that's, it's certainly within your discretion to remove one of those projects, but each, removing each of the three has, has some consequences. $200,000 is budgeted in 2024 to implement smart water practices at Lee Richardson Zoo. We still wish to pursue this project, but a couple of options, we could look from non-taxing source funds or delay the project until 2025. You just had an agenda item on a fairly high-profile water conservation project, and I think we need to keep our eye on the $20 million ball, $20 million ball, more so than the $200,000 ball. So not that this project gets, gets altogether cut, but it, it could wait for maybe a more appropriate window of time and another source of funding. $562,000 is budgeted in 2024 for a network refresh of IT infrastructure. This is really an all-or-nothing change, and so if you were to reduce it, it would be a reduction of the whole, the whole 562, although there is some offset of some existing recurring costs in there, so I don't know that the savings would be a full $562,000, probably be more in the $400,000 range, I think. But in the third-party analysis of our system, an evaluation of our system, a network refresh was strongly advised, and particularly with the effectively brain transplant of the organization between the Tyler Technologies on the financial and human resources side, the CAT RMS side, the utility billing side, all the, all the pieces together now seems to be the appropriate time to, to move forward with that. So that's our kind of recommended changes in the expense category. You could also, I mean, any line item in there is up for grabs, but as we looked through and worked with the management team and then, and considered the big rocks that were out there that could move to help you arrive at a target number, these were the ones that we picked, and we kind of color-coded that in, from a staff perspective, in our preference of green, yellow, and red.
Moving to, yeah, moving to revenues. So the city's typical practice is that we conservatively underestimate our revenues and overestimate expenses. This has allowed us to build up a cash balance that enables the commission to keep a relatively stable mil levy rate, and we look back the last 10 years, that's kind of been the mechanism that's been able to allow us to do that. If the commission desired, they could adjust your own fund revenues to budget more closely to the pace of collections of 2023 through May, rather than to keep them as conservatively as they originally stated. Attached to the item, there was a spreadsheet breakout that shows that pace of what 2022 actuals were, what we've collected thus far this year through May, and what that divided by five times 12 would account for the year. Some of those revenues indicated aren't a clear timeline-type revenue. For example, building permits, mechanical permits, there's not a month-by-month trend that stays consistent, so some of the assumption there is a little bit vague or tilted, but we tried to identify kind of the major revenues where we felt like there was a more exaggerated understatement in our original budget, that if you felt the desire to adjust revenues, these would be the ones that we, we gravitated towards. So as we look forward to the alternatives that will be placed before you, one of those mechanisms will be adjusting those revenues by the tiers in the bottom section of that document. We also have unbudgeted considerations. At the June 20, 2023 commission meeting, staff presented five additional costs that were not yet incorporated into the budget or the geo-bond issuance. In addition to these five, it's been identified that the roof of the Sixth Street Recreation Center, as was presented today, is compromised and needed repair. So we have proposed solutions for these projects as indicated. For the Buffalo Dunes Golf Course Improvement of $200,000, we recommend utilizing the .15 sales tax collections that have outpaced the debt obligations to pay the cost of this project. Same applies for the $250,000 of an estimated additional cost that we have for the airport terminal project. For downtown development incentive of $250,000, staff recommends utilizing funding received from the KMEA EMP2 credits related to the ARR and TCR credits. For the transfer, the transfer to the Capital Improvement Plan Fund for future CIP projects, we project or recommend setting aside $500,000 from the funding received from the KMEA credits as well. This is to help build that fund balance of the CIP for those future projects. We anticipate, we're still working as staff on the CIP list that we present next year, but we'll take it to the public, and by next budget cycle, we'll have identified specific target projects that'll be the top priority projects for the commission, and then with the buildup of this fund, we'll be able to identify a game plan of how and when we can accomplish those based off these transfers coming into this fund. For the McGrath Pay Plan For the McGrath Pay Plan update recommendations, we are setting aside an estimated $350,000. That's a, that's a holder number. Until we get those recommendations back, we don't know what that will be, but that's an estimate that the staff has put together. As this McGrath group is currently working on reviewing the city's salary schedule, as Matt said, this was implemented in 2021, and we've seen quite a shift in the markets since that time. So we anticipate there will be a recommendation from McGrath to likely adjust our salary schedule accordingly to become more comparable to the market. We recommend budgeting for an additional $350,000 in the general fund in anticipation of this upcoming expense, which moves us further away from the, you know, that target number in the beginning presented. And then for the Sixth Street Recreation Center roof repair for the $200,000, we recommend and was approved today using those EMP2 credits as well to cover the cost of that project. So staff has prepared seven potential scenarios for the commission's review that could achieve different target mill levy rates. Those rates are up one mil to 39.378, up one half mil, 38.878, flat at 38.378, down one half mil, down one mil, down two mils, and the revenue neutral rate of 34.279. All seven scenarios incorporate the following reductions to the general fund expenses and the addition of the cost of the McGrath recommendations with a total impact of saving $457,000. The first one is the removal of the 550,000 budgeted for the fire and police budgets for the mobile command unit, as the city will work to pursue other funding sources for this equipment. The removal of the Human Resources Generalist Position in 2024, which adds a value of approximately $57,000. While we recognize that we probably will have this position in the future, we'll eliminate it at this time. Removal of the $200,000 budgeted for implementing smart water practices at the zoo. Since the nature of this is for improving irrigation and modify fill ponds, we can look at either utilizing the water utility or other funding sources or postpone this until a later date. And then adding the $350,000 to the general fund to account for adjustments made to the salary schedule based on the recommendations from McGrath. Scenarios one through five utilize varying adjustment amounts to general fund revenues budgeted in 2023 and 2024 to achieve the target mill levy rate. Scenario six and seven also utilize adjustments to the general fund revenues, but incorporate additional adjustments to achieve the target mill levy rate. And you'll notice as you look at that spreadsheet attachment, that these values will match the total column listed on each scenario. So scenario one would achieve a targeted mill levy of 39.378 by adjusting general fund revenues by $46,000. Scenario two would achieve the targeted mill levy rate of 38.878 by adjusting general fund revenues by $186,000. Scenario three would achieve the targeted mill levy rate of 38.378 by adjusting general fund revenues by $326,000. Scenario four would achieve the targeted mill levy of 37.878 by adjusting general fund revenues by $466,000. And scenario five would achieve the targeted mill levy of 37.378 by adjusting general fund revenues by $606,000. Scenario six would achieve the targeted mill levy of 36.378 by adjusting general fund revenues by $606,000 and removing the cemetery expansion project from the proposed geo-bond projects, resulting in an impact of $180,000, and reducing the general fund cash carryover in 2025 to, by $100,000. Scenario seven would achieve the target mill levy of 34.279 through the following: adjusting general fund revenues by $606,000, removing the cemetery expansion project from the proposed geo-bond, resulting in an impact of $180,000, reducing the general fund cash carryover to 2025 by $100,000, removing the IT network refresh at 562,000, reducing Downtown Vision's 2024 allotment by $12,000, and reducing Finney County Economic Development Corporation's 2024 allotment by $13,000. From this point, the city commission has the ability to make any adjustments to the 2024 budget before the publication of the 2024 budget hearing notice. The notice is scheduled to be presented to the commission at the August 1st meeting and will be published thereafter. At this time, a decision must be made regarding the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The city's requirement is to indicate whether or not the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The city is also asked to include an anticipated mill levy rate for which to be included in the publication sent to the residents by the county. The final mill levy adopted by the city and published for the budget hearing can differ from the mill levy rate included in the publication. However, the city aims to estimate the anticipated mill levy rate accurately. Your practice has been to do so. We have not adjusted it since we've started the revenue neutral rate notice. So the alternatives before you today are to authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent stating that the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate and identify a mill levy rate to be included on the publication sent to citizens, or to authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent stating the city does not intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate and indicate the revenue neutral rate or some other lower rate than the revenue rate to be included on the publication sent to citizens. Staff recommends alternative one. Fiscal note is everything I just said today. We are happy to answer any questions the commission may have, but at this time, it's kind of up to you guys to give us direction on the target mill levy rate and those adjustments you'd like to make.
All right. Thanks, Jared and Matt, for all of that. So I think now we can just kind of have a discussion about where, you know, where the staff brought together the red, the green, and the yellow, and where you guys are as far as your thoughts on that process? And any changes or adjustments that you think need to be made? We don't have to go through each one, but just kind of, do you agree with the staff and where they came up with some of those scenarios?
All right, I do. And I think what Jared, just kind of repeating about what some of those revenues on these projects don't really reflect in some of these scenarios. So the unknown part of when the projects get complete, the revenue back is unknown. So at that point, we don't, it's kind of hard to assume a number, a hard number for that. But I think they did a really good job on projecting to see what we can kind of, you know, move around or accept as a decrease for achieving what our goal is.
Yeah, I'm happy with that process that we have. Excuse me, I'll leave it to the staff to determine which of those make the most sense to eliminate and which ones don't make sense to eliminate. So I think that makes a lot of sense how that was done. And then also thanks to the departments that said, you know what, we can probably delay this a year, or this is something that we don't have to do. Because I know every one of these is a project that they've been working on. So, but the process overall seems like that made a lot of sense and...
I agree. I, I mean, I read through each one of them and, I mean, it makes sense where there's, especially the red ones are critical projects that need to definitely get done. I mean, we approved one today because it's important to maintain our, our assets in our community. And just looking through it, it looks like, you know, staff's worked through the process and the departments understand kind of where we're at with our budget. And I agree with, you know, where the greens are and the yellows and definitely the reds, where we're, we're sitting.
I also agree. I think, I also appreciated the insight into the repercussions and some of those unintended consequences of just choosing something and what that could look like, especially when you think about that 2025 budget and how it will impact future budgets. But then also I just want to commend the staff for making those tough decisions about where the red would occur and the green and the yellow and just the willingness to work towards that end goal of choosing a budget. So looking then at the scenarios, the seven scenarios, and the vote or the decision today will be whether or not we want to exceed that revenue neutral rate of 34.279, which is scenario seven. And I'm trying to get a sense now as to where the commission would like to land to give staff kind of an understanding of where they need to work after we've decided today what we want to do with that. So any comments or thoughts as to the revenue neutral rate and whether or not we want to stay there or we are looking at possibly even exceeding that? Not necessarily a vote right now, but just kind of a general consensus.
So I think in my mind, there's three, three separate things here. One is revenue neutral. One is what the published rate would be. And then a third that could be different than a published rate is what we're working towards other staff. And in my, in my mind, it goes revenue neutral, obviously is going to have to be, not obviously, but probably is, and it needs, or at least from my opinion, is probably going to have to be exceeded. The published rate that I was looking at was a flat, so no, no change to the mil rate. But then where are we directing staff? I think there is an opportunity and a pathway to do a reduction in the mil rate. But I'd rather publish a higher rate. I mean, one of those things like, like we'll say it's worse than, actually, we can come in better than that just for the publication thing. So my things would be look at exceeding revenue neutral rate, publishing that flat rate, but then also at a staff, looking at a reduction of that rate and how we can achieve that. Because we don't have to, the actual adoption of that rate is like in October or something. I mean, we're going to see a lot more revenues come in. If they come in at what we think they're going to come in, that reduction should be a lot easier to see clearly that that's something that's achievable. And it looks like right now that it is achievable.
I agree. And I mean, I'm, I'm pretty much set at looking at the future and what's this going to put us in, you know, to 2025? Is it going to make us have or allow us to increase it by one or 2% because of where we're going to be sitting at then? We don't know. I mean, I'm comfortable at seeing it at the scenario two with it being adjusted of one, like .5%. That's, and I'm just, I am, I think I am kind of looking at the positive though, as you are, Mr. Dick, on seeing what the revenue is going to come in later on, seeing how strong those, those are going to help us to come in lower if we need to. But I think at this point, I think that's, I'm comfortable going to scenario two on my, on my part. So, so flat is okay, but I'm just, I'm just worried about the future. I mean, that's, I'd rather go up in the future of another .1 if we had to versus then going up a whole 1% and then, but...
You mean one mil or half a mil?
Yes, one mil.
Okay.
Yeah, .5 mil or one mil.
Got you.
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Sessna?
You know, I'm looking at keeping it the mil levy flat, but again, with the scenarios that we've been presented, like Commissioner Dick was commenting, that it probably come in better, but we'll just have to wait and see on that. Yeah, I just look at it as keeping it at, at the current rate of the 38.378 and publishing, of course, that will, will exceed the revenue neutral rate, of course. I mean, we have been. But again, I know our, and then adjusting those revenues because that is an area that we, we always look at for adjustment as we move through the fiscal year. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah. I'm kind of there as well. I think we can agree that, from what I hear, that scenario seven, the revenue neutral rate is not a target. And so we're looking at, definitely not going over that. I would like it to stay as flat as possible. I know, you know, with the double-digit 11% valuation on properties and some of the other factors in our economy right now, I, I just worry about people and taxes and the increases that they'll have. And so from the city's perspective, just trying to keep that as neutral as possible or as flat as possible for me would be the target. But as the other commissioner said too, looking at the revenue rates and kind of conservatively looking at half, half a mil, and then even looking at a decrease, kind of in those three scenarios, might be a good target to sort of look at. Does that kind of give you enough?
It does. I'll need a number, a mil levy rate from the commission to put on the indication revenue trade to go to the county.
But if we, when we're talking about publishing, we can't go over a rate of what is published, correct, for the mil?
On the R and R rate, you indicate a mil levy, you can go up or down from that. When you publish your notice of public hearing, which will be the next formal action the commission takes, once you do that, you can make any changes to your budget, provided they don't cause an increase in the mil levy. So there's a new, a new first step was added with this revenue neutral rate. And you can go, it doesn't, it doesn't box you in. Once you publish your notice of public hearing, you've established the maximum mil, or the maximum amount of dollars you can raise from, from property tax, from ad liborem tax.
And the first meeting in August is when you would approve that publication.
Right, right. And then we'll have some better revenue numbers by then too.
We would potentially have some revenues through July that we could analyze. But that would, we wouldn't, like you mentioned, September, October, you wouldn't really be able to adjust for that up until the very end. Because as Matt said, once we publish that, you're locked at that revenue or that rate for the mil. You can go down.
Go down.
Go down.
Correct.
Right.
And I recognize that, like Commissioner Ortiz is saying, like, I mean, at the same time that we're talking about this, we're also spinning up a whole, a whole new portion of an airport, a whole new fire station, a lot of these that increases budgets. But at the same time, I think it's kind of showing the strength of our, of our economy that we can do these major projects that oftentimes other communities, especially other communities our size, these would be significant mil burdens. And we're able to take them on at potentially keeping the mil rate flat or even a decrease. So I do share some of those concerns about what that looks like going forward, but at the same time, our economy has been strong and it's, that's, I kind of think that there is an opportunity to keep them flat when we do take, even though we're taking on some of these large projects.
Somebody have a recommendation for a motion? So the motion then, okay. Commissioner Sessna?
I'll make the motion that we, that the mayor sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent stating that the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate and have a mil levy of, let me get back to my notes here. Three point, or 38.378, which is keeping it flat, mils to be included on the publication sent to citizens.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Item G is the consent agenda. If approved, it would be, if you don't want to pull either of the two things off and talk about them separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve items G1 and 2.
I move to approve consent agenda items G1 and 2.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, city commission reports. Commissioner Sessna?
Attended the Great Race event. Really great turnout, a lot of awesome vehicles in the downtown area. It was just great to see events like that come through our community and hosting events like that. Just wanted to mention that coming up this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, I know the mayor will probably mention it too, but I'll take a little bit of your thunder.
Please go ahead.
The stuff the bus event will be at a number of retailers throughout the community in Garden City. And the organizations are working to stuff around 2,000 backpacks of school supplies for the upcoming school year. So just be mindful as you're out shopping, just grab an additional or a couple items and help stuff those buses on Saturday and Sunday of this weekend. Nine to three each day, there'll be school buses at all the locations around the community. And that's all I've got.
All right. Commissioner Ortiz?
All right, well, first off, I'm going to say good luck to my daughter who's playing right now in a softball tournament in Missouri. So hopefully they continue to win out through the weekend and so good luck to that team. I did also hear lots of good comments on the Great Race. That was a well-attended event. It was well-published, well noted, people publicly noticed for people to come. And the work relationship with CBB and Downtown Vision and city staff, electric department, trash and everything, they, they did a tremendous job on organizing and, and having that event just being a spectacular event here in Garden City. Lot of positive comments. I didn't know anything about the Great Race. We had the official staff that kept the record and place, the record place of those racers in our office. So they were staffed in our office, which is, I got to learn the background of how that got started and created and the maps that they use or not, real maps, it's picture art. If you, it's like a treasure hunt. You got a picture and you got to go find it by taking five paces, you know, north and then turn east at this specific sign. So it was, it was pretty interesting and I learned a lot by just those officials being there and talking to us. But the, the...
there and talking to us. But the racers, people involved in that, I, yeah, I held, I have much appreciation for them because of the dedication that they, that they put into that and the families that, you know, helped that, you know, race and things like that. There's, they just, they have lots of time and effort put in that. But yeah, it's, it was, it's amazing. So great event. I don't know what else I attended. The parade was, was nice to have, the Fourth of July parade. Fireworks was awesome around town. We did have a little rain, but I think my drive here to work this morning, I didn't see, and yesterday morning, I didn't see a whole lot of trash. So that was, that's good to see. You know, a lot of times you see where cities have open fireworks in the city, you see just trash left out. But I, you know, there was some a little, but I think that they're, you know, citizens and they're just being respectful for the city and keeping it clean. So I just, I hope we continue that as, as we move forward in the years to come, that, you know, we just be respectful for the city and help clean up and things like that. Also with the weeds, I know that's been a tremendous fight as well with all the rain, but we love the rain. We love the moisture. If you need help mowing, call somebody. Yeah, I, I do some volunteer help, so I will go out and help if you need to. So if any elder, elderly folk that need help, reach out to me and I'll, I'll be glad to go out and help. I love doing that. I love having my kids go out and help me do that. So it just, it builds character. So, and that's it.
Commissioner Dick?
Thanks to all the public comments, Lisa and Becky with the little leaders. Good to see that there are some slots available for daycare. I know that's always a concern for a community. So make sure you get in contact with them if you're needing or you know somebody who needs childcare, because there are some availability there. Thanks to Eric Smith and Sean Thayer to talk about that issue. Could I get a comment either from Matt or Danielle about what the next steps would be in that process about talking about, is this a, you would meet with them, or do we have a public meeting, or what would be the next steps in discussing those, the dates for those liquor sales?
Yeah, I think it would be a proposed ordinance change, and the city attorney staff would prepare it for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Great, not great, but it was a good honor, Mr. Knoll and, and Mr. Boone, with their service. It's one of those things that I grew up with. I mean, my, my grandpa was, was involved in World War II with a local trainer for B-29 pilots here. And just as you get older, we lose more and more of that generation. So every time you lose somebody, it's, it's sad to see part of that history go. So it's worthwhile to learn and to make sure our kids learn about those sorts of things and what they did for our country and what they did for the world. Because that generation and those people really did. And then, and again, it's not like, like you see, it's, it's, Mr. Knoll was, was part of a family of 13. I mean, that sacrifice that he made wasn't just himself but his family. So just keep those memories alive with ourselves and our kids. But great to, great to be able to honor them. Was able to attend the Great Lake Race, like everybody else, a well put-on event, super exciting. I'm not big on cars, but I think I'm going to internet next year. Because that was, that was a really neat process. And there's, there were some really, really neat cars. And I hope at some point in the future, I know they choose a different route every year, but if you missed it, when it happens to come around again in a decade or something, make sure you stop by and go to that event. There are some super neat cars. And I'm not a car guy at all. Parade, the Independence Day Parade was good. Got a ride in with the mayor and waved to everybody. Well-attended, pretty good event there. And then last thing, I kind of already spoke one piece on the mil rate, but it's really encouraging to see a community the size of ours taking on the projects that we do at the same time that we are even in the realm of talking about keeping our mil rate flat or even possibly, possibly decreasing it. I mean, I don't know if there's any other community that is able to achieve that sort of thing. I mean, especially, I mean, just look at what the airport's going to be and what that's going to provide to not just our community, but to our area. So that's really good to see. And then really the strength of that is, and the reason we can achieve a lot of this is because of the strength of our retail trade. And we looked, we were seeing our budget last meeting, how much of our budget comes in from the outside area. So when we're talking about why is it important to have retail traders, and the importance of things like the airport is, we're having people coming in from all over the region, spending money here, Sam's Club and that sort of thing. It's, it's nice to be able to provide that kind of service like we have at the airport back to the, the region. So really good to see our, our budget situation. So, good deal. I think that's it.
Okay. To kind of talk a little bit about what Commissioner Sessna did with Stuff the Bus, the backpack distribution will be on July 27 at nine o'clock at Garfield. And yes, any volunteers would be greatly appreciated to help with that event. And yes, it was great to honor our two war heroes. I mean, it's something that is so important to remember, you know, and to never forget, you know, the greatest generation and always remember, you know, the sacrifice that they made. And, especially with Gregory Knoll and the ultimate sacrifice, and just for his family to be able to, you know, have some closure, you know, when you see the MIA flags and you always think, wow, you know, just, it's just very humbling, you know, to know that this family, you know, has that opportunity, you know, to say goodbye. And so, and also, we're going to miss Jamie. And so we look forward to, you know, watching what you do next in your career. And, and thank you for everything that you've done in Garden City. And we appreciate just how you've improved and increased our social media. And so you have some big shoes to fill. So thank you for everything you've done. I was able to attend a roundtable with Senator Marshall. It was a small gathering. We talked about healthcare and immigration. We talked about housing. We talked about childcare. But it was just a nice opportunity to have a small gathering and to be able to visit and talk about our agenda and what we have going on at the city and the things that are important to us here in Garden City, especially, you know, with the federal level and how their decisions impact us here locally, and making them aware of those decisions and how they impact us locally. I was able to give the welcome at the Southwest Kansas Builders, excuse me, Builders Association Golf Tournament and at the Great Race. And it was, it was just humbling to see all those people. And I agree, I mean, I do like cars. My dad was a race car driver, and I'll probably race with you next year. I think that would be fun. Although I don't want to be the, I don't want to be the navigator. I'll just drive the car. I think that sounds a little too complicated. I barely know, if someone tells me to turn east, I'm like, is that left or right? So I don't know how well I would do with that. Also had an opportunity, the Finney County Community Health Coalition had a panel of elected officials to visit with their nonprofit agencies about being an elected official and if anyone was interested in doing that. We had a lot of really good comments from that group and an opportunity for them to kind of see what it would take if they wanted to run for office, or even volunteer on one of our advisory committees, or even what that civic engagement piece looks like. I mean, it's, it's so important that we have that civic engagement from our community, because that's really, that's the pulse. That's what, that's how we make those decisions and can make those good decisions. Yeah, the Fourth of July parade was, was a lot of fun and another great turnout. And also, I agree, you know, in talking about the mil levy and all of the projects that we have going on. And when you have an opportunity to look at the budget in that detail and to be able to see the great job that the city does, being able to maintain those expenses, but still come up with these just fantastic projects, it's, it's real, it's a true testament to the city and to the staff. And for us to be able to talk to other communities or to talk to our citizens about some of those items, and to be able to present some of those details, I think is important to have. So, good discussion today. So thank you all for that. And that is all I have. So with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Yeah.